Welcome to the May 2020 meeting of the Mecklenburg County Department of County Commissioners. The light of both the continued COVID-19 state of emergency at home orders, the board meetings continue to be conducted remotely. The public may join and follow the meeting by Googling on the web, necnc.gov, or follow us on, I'll call the following number, and enter the following access code. We will begin the meeting tonight by having each board member identify him or herself so that the records can reflect who is present and participating in the meeting. I will introduce myself and then call upon each of my colleagues to do the same as I call out their respective district. I am George Dunlap. I am participating remotely. I am elected by the people of District 3, and I also have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Board. Next, at-large Commissioner Pat Coffin.
Hello, I'm Pat Coffin, County Commissioner at Large. And on a quick personal note, I would like to thank everyone for the prayers and words of comfort for the unexpected loss of my older sister a few days ago. Your kindness was overwhelming, and I am so grateful. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Earl Scarborough.
Commissioner Earl Scarborough, what other information do you need?
Okay, your county commissioner at large. Okay, Commissioner Trevor Fuller.
All right, good evening. My name is Commissioner Trevor Fuller. I'm honored and privileged to serve as a county commissioner at large, representing all the more than 1 million people in Mecklenburg County. I'm participating tonight remotely. Thanks for joining us.
District Representative, District 1.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Powell. I represent District 1, which is all of North Mecklenburg, Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte. And I also serve as Vice Chair, and I am participating remotely. Thank you.
Commissioner, District 2.
This is Commissioner Vilma De Leek. I represent the most powerful people in the county. Thank you for the opportunity, and I too am serving as a county commissioner for District 2.
District 4 Representative.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Jurell, and I represent the people of District 4. Want to say good evening and also want to once again extend my condolences to our colleague Commissioner Coffin on the loss of her sister. Thank you.
Commissioner, District 5.
Good evening. My name is Susan Harden, and I represent District 5, and I am participating remotely.
And Commissioner, District 6.
Good evening. This is Susan Rodriguez McDowell. I represent District 6, and I am participating remotely.
So for the record, all commissioners have acknowledged their presence for the meeting. Therefore, we have a quorum. For some reason, you have to... I'm sorry. Okay, so let me also introduce our staff. Clerk to the Board.
Good evening. Emily Kunzie, Clerk to the Board.
Our Deputy Clerk.
Good evening. I'm Christine Smith, Deputy Clerk.
Our County Manager.
Good evening. I'm Dina DiOrio, Mecklenburg County Manager.
And our County Attorney.
Good evening, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Our invocation tonight will be given by Commissioner Vilma Leek.
The great county of Mecklenburg, I'm humbled to be the person to talk about and lifting our hearts as relates to the invocation. As I said this, my heart is heavy this evening and has been a number of days because of the virus that we are experiencing. And especially for my senior citizens who wear a badge of knowing that this could happen any day with them based upon research. But no, this does not have to happen. But I ask us also to pray for this community, that we will do what's best for our people, not what's best for those who do not live in this community with us. I want to say appreciation to our teachers who have worked very hard in trying to bring about a quality of education for all of our children. And as I studied and prayed to the Lord to give me something to say, I thought about hard work. Whatever you do, work at it with all your heart, as working for our Savior, not for humane or for self, but working for the people. Work can be a problem, or it can be a delight, depending on the day, depending on the circumstances in which you work. When we find ourselves in a job that fits our gifts and our talents, working for people who appreciate us, work gives us immense satisfaction and joy. But when we are in a job, I mean a job, a real job that doesn't fit our personality or our skills, or when we work with people who take us for granted, or distrust is shown, or disrespect is shown, it can make you feel like a never-ending prison sentence for you. No matter what type of job that we are in, our Savior wants us to remember, we're really working for Him and with Him. He will bless honesty. He will bless dignity and diligence. And a respectful attitude is most rewarding. We can pray for better opportunities for all people and acquire the skills to move us to a new position. In the meantime, we need to remember that our real boss is the loving of people, the giving the best that we have at all times for those who cannot help themselves. And as we find ourselves in a critical situation now that we live in, He will, He will reward us for the hard work that we do. So dear Father, help me find the satisfaction in this, my job, the job You've put upon my head and all of us. I want to honor You, to praise Your name, and to ask You to bless those who despite for the use of, those who disrespect You and what You do for us. For this board, I ask for harmony. For this board, I ask for peace. For this board, I ask that we do the right thing for the right people at the right time. And these and other blessings I ask in for His name we say, amen, and amen, and amen.
All right, if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would, please mute your mic while we say the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since we are still conducting remote meetings, there are a few housekeeping rules to which we must adhere to to govern our actions so that our board minutes are accurate. This must be an orderly meeting, and for the meeting to run smoothly, there are a couple of things that we ask. If a commissioner wishes to leave the meeting, please ask for upon a personal privilege, state the privilege, so that the minutes capture the actions and the attendance of each board member. When the commissioner returns, please announce your return when convenient to do so. Since no one is physically present, when a matter is put to the floor for debate, I'll have to call on each commissioner and ask whether they have comments. Please wait to be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please refrain from speaking over one another or interrupting another speaker. May I suggest that each speaker end their comments by saying, "This concludes my comments." And if a commissioner has no comments on the particular matter, if you would simply state, "I have no comment," or "I do not wish to speak to this matter." When a motion is made, motions need to state... The person needs to state their name and also the name of the person who makes the second. And the chair will verbally repeat the mover and the seconder and the motion for the record. Since we cannot see one another, when there is a matter requiring a vote, I will conduct a roll call vote. I will call upon each commissioner separately and ask for a vote to be cast verbally so that there is no confusion as to how a commissioner voted. At the end of the roll call vote, the clerk will then state the results of each vote. Thank you. So let us begin. The first item we want to deal with is items that have been pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any items that need to be pulled other than those that have currently been pulled? Okay, hearing none, let's move to the first item on our agenda. It is awards and recognition. At this time, we'll have a proclamation read by Commissioner Leek on Older Americans Month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to share this proclamation with those whom we perceive to be old in age but not old in spirit. Whereas Mecklenburg County includes a growing number of more than 150,000 residents aged 60 and older who make countless contributions to our community every day of their lives. Whereas Mecklenburg County supports older and experienced adults by offering services that include transportation, nutrition, adult and community social work, and other avenues to satisfy this community. Whereas Mecklenburg County recognizes the value for attributes and knowledge of older adults or those who are experienced, who are appreciated for their contributions, their wisdom, their knowledge, their experiences that they've had with longevity and the insight to the community that they live in. And whereas Mecklenburg County Age Friendly Committee is committing to helping all individuals, hoping to provide longevity, healthy lives, and healthy communities where all can breathe good clean air, eat right food, and have a respectable job, and their choice for as long as possible that they have worked for. Whereas older Americans are more active and engaged in striving for wellness for themselves and for others while also making their mark in this community through sharing their time, their energy, and their knowledge and their talents, which are many. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, in conjunction with the National Observance of Older Americans Month, with the theme that has been given, "Make Your Mark", does hereby proclaim May 2020 as Older Americans Month or either Experienced Americans Month in Mecklenburg County and urge all residents to recognize and celebrate, celebrate, celebrate older adults and the people who support them as essential and important members of this great community of ours. Date is the 5th day of May 2020. Signed by our Chairperson, Mr. George Dunlap, Mecklenburg County Commissioner at Large, District 3 Chairperson, and the remainder members of the Board. So read and so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
This is Commissioner Jurell. I'll second that.
So it was moved by Commissioner Leek, seconded by Commissioner Jurell to adopt the proclamation. This time, I'll conduct a roll call vote. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Aye.
Commissioner Jurell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That is a unanimous yes vote.
All right. We'll move on to item 26, the 111 Building Safety Month. There's a proclamation to be read by Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Mecklenburg County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of disaster. And whereas our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, code enforcement officials, architects, engineers, contractors, and other members of the construction industry. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's larger unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, to assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to Mecklenburg County's prosperity. And whereas the bedrock of a thriving community is safe and resilient construction, Building Safety Month 2020 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure the safety of our built environment and recognizes the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies as saved lives and protected homes and businesses. And whereas the construction industry, which is essential and critical to the economic well-being of our community, has been continuing to work during unprecedented times as the COVID-19 pandemic has progressed, providing tremendous service to the people of Mecklenburg County. And whereas Mecklenburg County code enforcement staff have dedicated themselves to finding ways during these extraordinary circumstances to ensure code compliance while also preventing the spread of COVID-19, protecting their customers and their community in various ways. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire department, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2020 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, Mecklenburg County citizens are encouraged to thank all the individuals and industries involved, including the code officials and construction industry, make our community safe and vibrant. This, the 5th day of May 2020, George Dunlap, Chair, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second. This is Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
All right, it was moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell. I will now conduct the roll call vote. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Present.
Commissioner Jurell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right. So this time, we'll move to public appearance. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
There are no speakers registered to speak tonight.
Thank you. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, the manager's report. The manager has three items under her report. Everything COVID-19 will be together, so make sure you take your notes from the first section, and then after the end of the second section, we'll do questions. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the County Manager. Before I talk about the COVID-19 updates, I do want to announce two staffing changes. As you know, Michael Bryant will be assuming his role as Assistant County Manager effective tomorrow, and he and Mark Foster will be working side by side over the next 60 days on that transition. So in an acting capacity, our Budget Manager, Adrian Cox, will assume the role of Budget Director in an acting capacity. Adrian is a local government budget professional with 13 years of experience in local government. He's worked for Mecklenburg County for nine years and has served as the Budget Manager for six years under the leadership of Michael Bryant. Adrian holds a Master of Public Administration, and he is a Certified Budget and Evaluation Officer with the North Carolina Local Government Budget Association. In addition, Adrian has completed the High Performance Leadership Certification from E. Cornell, the Public Executive Leadership Academy at the UNC School of Government, and he is an alumnus of the Leaders Under 40 Program through the Community Building Initiative. Adrian is also a local government Federal Credit Union Leadership Fellow through the UNC School of Government, and has completed the Municipal and County Administration Course also through the UNC School of Government. And Adrian will be taking us through the remaining portions of our budget process through budget adoption, and will continue in an acting capacity until we decide how to move forward from there. So because Adrian will be assuming the acting role of Budget Director, his position as Budget Manager is now vacant, and Lyden Williams will assume that role in an acting capacity. Lyden earned his Master of Public Administration degree from Appalachian State University in 2013, and has been an Enterprise Management Analyst with Mecklenburg County since 2017. He previously served as a Budget Analyst with Forsyth County and the City of Clinton, North Carolina. Since joining Mecklenburg County, Lyden has led several large projects related to the budgets for social services and community support services, served as a lead administrator for county's budget system, and most recently led the development and implementation of the county's award-winning budget, public engagement, and... the county's award-winning Budget Public Engagement Initiative. And Lyden lives with his wife Amber in Huntersville, and they are expecting their first child in October. And so I'm very excited about the fact that we've got these two wonderful professionals in our organization who will step up into these roles and take us through the budget process. So I know you'll join me in congratulating them on these new positions. So in terms of COVID-19, as you, I'm sure you heard earlier at five o'clock today, Governor Cooper has announced and signed an executive order that we will be moving into Phase One of his reopening plan effective Friday, May eighth at 5:00 PM. And what that basically does is it modifies the current stay-at-home order. It does not lift the stay-at-home order. So what that means is the expectation is that people will stay home, but they will be able to go out for additional activities than they were under the current order. So under this new order, there is no difference between essential and nonessential business activities. Stores have to operate at fifty percent capacity. Gyms, salons, and bars will remain closed during Phase One. Restaurants are still available for takeout and delivery. Mask gatherings are still limited to ten, but gatherings outside with friends is okay with social distancing. Teleworking is encouraged. Childcare centers can re-enroll if they meet CDC guidelines, and worship outdoors of ten or more is now permitted. So those are, that's a very high overview of what changes Friday at 5:00 PM. And to that point, we had a meeting yesterday of our Business Roundtable, our Business Leaders' Roundtable, to talk about how we move into Phase One. I think the biggest takeaway from the meeting yesterday is that we are working on a toolkit designed really for small businesses to help them understand what their COVID plan needs to be and provide resources to small businesses to allow them to be effective, so that they can operate safely and keep their customers safe as well. So that's kind of what the Business Leaders' Roundtable is working on right now. The other thing I just wanted to mention to the board is that we are also working on our internal Mecklenburg County Government reopening strategy. Derek and the executive team have been working very hard with our Cabinet to understand how we bring services back online and what we need to do to our facilities in terms of social distancing and providing hand sanitizer and other resources in our facilities to be able to bring our employees back to work safely. We don't have a date yet. It will not be before Phase One is complete. But again, we have some very large facilities, as you know, Valerie Woodard, Suttle, Billingsley, and a lot of those is going to be challenging to bring everybody back at one time. So we will be taking a very phased and measured approach in terms of how we bring customers, how we bring employees back. Having said that, as you already know, county government is virtual, and we are providing services to our customers, so there's no services at this point that are really not being provided. So again, we want to make sure that we keep our customers safe and we keep our employees safe. And so we are working on our phase reopening plan. And with that, I will turn it over to Gibby for her COVID-19 update. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Manager Diorio. I have a brief update for you this evening. We released our regular data this morning. As of this afternoon, we have a total of seventeen hundred and ninety-one laboratory confirmed cases in Mecklenburg County and a total of fifty-eight deaths. We still have twelve long-term care facilities in outbreak status. Most of our data has not changed significantly, and so I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through it. One of the things that I will point out is that we have looked at our data of those who have died a little more closely, and now that our numbers are higher, we're able to be able to demonstrate this data. And again, as of May third, we had fifty-two deaths. Of those, twenty-six were confirmed or connected to long-term care facilities. The age range is mostly in greater than sixty, that's ninety-four percent of the deaths. Male-female split is fairly even. Sixty-three point five percent of our deaths have been among whites, thirty point eight percent among blacks, and one point nine percent among Hispanics, and three point eight among Asians. The other part of the data that I'll point out to you is the trends that we've been following that are the same trends that the state's watching as they make determinations about opening into Phase One. And again, what we are hoping for with our trends is to see stabilization in our numbers. So the first is the number of cases reported to Mecklenburg County by date, and this was as of May one. We are looking at a seven-day moving average as a way of leveling out these things, because as you can see from the graph, our data pops up and down a lot with when cases are reported. But you will see that we have a fairly stable progression with the number of cases reported. If you look at the percent positive cases reported, that also has stabilized for us. And the third set of data that we're looking at is the daily hospitalization census, and that's actually shown a slight decrease over the past seven days, and we'll continue to watch that. In terms of social distancing, we have seen a flattening and almost a slight decrease in the social distancing. This is based on mobility data that is available to us nationally. There's not been a huge decrease, but I think as we see more things opening up, we're going to see the social distancing index continue to trend downwards a little bit, so we'll need to pay attention to that as well. And lastly, with the data, we put out a new curve graph for you, and it's what we expected to see as we continue to social distance and as our stay-at-home order has been in place. What we have seen is a significant flattening of our curve, which has allowed our data to stabilize the way we're talking about. What that then means is it pushes the peak out significantly. So we're seeing a peak projected right now at July fourteenth, and we'll have to continue to watch that data as well. A couple other quick things. We are doing very proactive outreach now with the long-term care facilities in the community that are not currently in outbreak status. That proactive outreach includes looking at their staffing capacity, their protective equipment capacity, and their testing capacity, and assisting them in any ways needed to make sure that they're able to meet the needs they have there. We're also reviewing all of their protocols and practices and strengthening those as needed. And lastly, we are working on a testing plan as we move into Phase One. We're using, we have a draft plan in place that we are discussing with our community partners around this. We are using some state guidance as well as looking at resources that are available and guidance from CDC and other national entities as well. That plan should be available later this week. End of report.
Thank you, Gibby. So that concludes the COVID-19 update, Mr. Chairman. If we want, we are available now to take questions.
Okay. The other COVID?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Cunningham to give you this item, which is the thirty-nine million dollars that we received from the federal government for COVID-19-related expenses. And I just want to point out before Sarah talks about this is that we were very fortunate that we got our funding directly from the federal government. We are one of three counties in the state of North Carolina that got our funding directly from the federal government. Otherwise, all the money went to the state, and we would have had to see how the General Assembly divided up that money to see how much Mecklenburg County would get. So I feel like we pushed really hard with the National Association of Counties to be able to get our funding directly from the federal government. It's not as much as we think we should have gotten, but the fact that we got it directly, I think, is really, really a good thing for Mecklenburg County. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you, County Manager Dioro, and good evening, Chair Dunlap and Commissioners. In the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or CARES Act, the federal government established the Coronavirus Relief Fund. The Coronavirus Relief Fund provides assistance to state and local governments with populations of five hundred thousand or more. The Coronavirus Relief Fund payments may only be used to cover costs that, one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19; two, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March twenty-seventh, 2020, the date that the CARES Act was enacted; and three, were incurred between March first, 2020, and December thirtieth, 2020. Examples of eligible expenses under the Coronavirus Relief Fund include public health expenses, including the communication and enforcement of public health orders, acquisition and distribution of supplies, and quarantining of individuals. Payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency, and expenses associated with the provision of economic support, including support to small businesses to reimburse the costs of business interruption. The county received thirty-nine point two million under this program, and we are requesting action tonight to establish a special fund to account for these funds, and also to appropriate the funds for the county's continued COVID-19 response. And that concludes an overview of what we're asking for. Presentation. Thank you.
Okay. So let me, let me do it like this. Given that what we're hearing today is really an update of what we've been hearing every, every week. Madam Clerk, if you will set the timer to five minutes for each Commissioner, then we'll give them a follow-up of an additional two minutes. Then we'll go to the action that is requested on this item of COVID-19 relief. Let me start with Commissioner Powell.
This is Commissioner Powell. Thank you to all the people who pushed to get the money directly, because I think that is important. So thank you to whoever that was. And I want to ask, does this include, like I see list of eligible expenses, does it include any mental health funding for what people are going through at this time? Do you know?
So yes, this is Sarah. It could be used for mental health funding as long as it meets the three requirements that were established in the Act. There are other potential streams that have been appropriated that we are expecting through the state that might also provide some support for mental health funding. So there may be multiple avenues from the CARES Act in addition to Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Okay. And so I want to make a request at this time to get some more data, you know, later in one of our presentations, or we've already received some data about suicides and some substance abuse, drug overdose problems. But I think we need a more comprehensive list of comparing what we're seeing now to what we saw last year and maybe the year before. I think we need to look at the comparisons, because there is an uptick, and I think we're going to need dollars to cover that, and we need to be responsive. So if we can look at everything in the mental health category, suicides, drug overdoses, child abuse, domestic violence, and compare the numbers to last year and the year before versus what we're seeing now, I think that will help us get the funding we're going to need going forward. So if we could, if I could request that data, I think it will help us know what our needs are going to be, because I think we're, we're going to have to have money for that to respond to it. And that concludes my questions for now. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Leek?
Thank you. My question deals specifically with the ordinance. Does this include the support for the seven townships that was a part of the meeting process in setting up the standards by which we would go?
So now, Commissioner Leek, we are following the governor's stay-at-home order. So this is, we're not making any decisions.
I'm sorry. I'm speaking about the budget process.
Oh, the budget process doesn't have, I'm not sure I understand your question, Commissioner Leek.
My question deals with the seven townships that helped make the decisions about what the standards would be for Mecklenburg County. Where do they fall in this process of the funds? Is this just for this part of Mecklenburg County and help to understand it?
I understand your question. The thirty-nine million dollars is for the county only. We are not anticipating, we are not planning to share the funds with the towns. The city of Charlotte got a hundred and fifty-four million dollars for the CARES Act, plus another a hundred and thirty-six million or so for the airport. But the thirty-nine million dollars that we're asking to appropriate here is just for Mecklenburg County.
Yes, but wouldn't those townships be in Mecklenburg County?
They are, but the funds are for the county only.
But I'm not, does this include those townships? They are part of Mecklenburg County?
It includes expenses that have, it includes expenses that have been undertaken by the county for the county. Geographically, it includes the entire county, but they're county expenses.
All right, so they are included then. Cornelius and Huntersville and all of those, are they included? That's what I'm asking.
If we spend money, if we spend county money, or this money in Cornelius or any of the towns, yes, it's included.
All right, that was my major question. Will we get them itemized listings of what is being held, what we're being held accountable to pay for as a board to make that decision?
Yeah, we've, we have provided, earlier today, we provided an accounting of what we have spent so far that we think can charge off to this thirty-nine million dollars, and we'll continue to provide updates around that as we move forward.
Well, do we have a copy of that information?
We sent it to you earlier today. Yes, you do.
I'd like to have a hard copy, please.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Jarrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gibby, I want to go to the data that was released earlier today. There's a slide in that deck that shows projected daily demand for hospital resources. And can you tell me if I'm reading it correctly, that it looks like we'll be short vents or ventilators, excuse me, and beds around our projected peak time? And if, in that accurately, can you tell me how we're solving to that?
So, yes. This, this does show based on our current hospital bed capacity and our current vent and ICU bed capacity, this does show that at our peak, we would be above our capacity with ICU beds and ventilators. We stay within the hospital bed capacity, the general hospital bed capacity. What this does not take into account is the surge capacity that the hospitals have built out and have not implemented yet. So if we start seeing, that's one of the reasons it's so important to watch this data, because if we start seeing the hospitals' increased utilization and increased needs for vents and for ICU beds, then we need to sort of kick into that surge capacity process so that they are implementing that surge and making it possible for us to meet that demand. So there are a number of, I mean, there are more metrics, obviously, that we look at on a daily basis to see where the hospitals are. The hospitals have been running about, their capacity's been running at about the sixties. So they've been pretty open with a lot of capacity, and they're just starting to implement some of the elective surgeries that they had postponed because of the capacity that they have right now. But they're also in a position to pull back on that if they need to and then go into the surge. So at this point, we feel like we're in pretty good shape with this.
Right. I got you. And my last question relates to testing. I know we're getting ready to, or we're trying to implement a plan where we're going to increase testing. It seems like we have been mobile units all over the community, which is great, and the response in the community's been really overwhelming. But as we increase testing, I know that trajectory of cases obviously will, will increase or rise, so, which is expected. So, which is expected and because it's expected, what are the primary indicators that you'll look at that will either cause alarm or provide some level of confidence that, that, that shows that, you know, this is just normal, what we're seeing based on the increased testing?
There are two of the indicators, I think, that are most important for us to take, to keep a close eye on. One is the percentage of positives to total tests being done. So as we do increase testing, yes, we expect to see increased positives. You know, people who are asymptomatic or who have minor symptoms and just did not consider themselves to be COVID positive. But if we look at that, that, that number as a percentage of total tests done, we, we should not see a spike there as we would in the total number of positives. The other indicator, I think, is the number of the hospital bed utilization is going to be critical to watch. So those are the two right now that I think are most important and that we're, we're keeping a very close eye on.
Thank you. That concludes my questions. Thank you, Gibby.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll come back to Commissioner Harden, Commissioner.
I'm here. I didn't hear you call my name. Sir, sir, I'm sorry. I apologize. I, I have, my first question is for Dina, under the phase one, childcare centers are back online. Will MECC pre-K be open?
And the reason we do that is be, the reason we do that is because NC pre-K is also follows the CMS school calendar.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you say that again? I, I totally, I don't know.
I think I was muted for half of it. I apologize. MECC pre-K will not be going back into session because they follow the CMS school calendar, which is consistent with NC pre-K. They also follow the CMS school calendar. So MECC pre-K will not go back into school until CMS reconvenes.
Okay, and then my next question is for Gibby. So Gibby, I mean, tell, tell me about the conversation that was had in the EOC about how this is going to work for parents. I mean, if you're a parent and you're, we're going into phase one and you have school age children and you're expected to be homeschooling those children and you have to go to work. What guidance are we giving to parents?
That's a good question. We are, are seeing more childcare centers poised and ready to open up and they'll, many of them will likely provide some services for school age children as well as the younger children. And then as we move into summer, obviously, we're looking at summer camps opening up as well. It is, it's a dilemma. It is a dilemma with schools closed. And I don't know that we've got a, a solid answer for that at this point. We're looking at it. And that's, you know, again, this whole issue is evolving as we speak. The, the solid guidance on phase one, we heard this afternoon. And it opens up on Friday afternoon at five o'clock. So we'll be working on that over the next couple of days to see what we can do to support those, those workers.
But under phase one as well, teleworking is still encouraged. You know, that's why we're going to be encouraging our employees, obviously, to stay at home as long as we possibly can for the reasons that you just mentioned. And we're hopeful that other employers will continue with that where, you know, they will let employees continue to telework as long as possible.
Yeah, I know that the retail is going to be opening back up and a lot of working class families, you know, that they don't, many of them don't telecommute or telework. And, and those are many of our MECC pre-K families. And so I guess I'm just really, I, I, I mean, Gibby, have we thought about guidance that we're going to give sitters? I have a feeling that their pa, parents are doing a big juggle right now about what they're going to do on May ninth or eighth. And so have we thought, I, I imagine people are going to be trying to find sitters and kind of, do we have guidance for how to do safe childcare on the fly kind of thing?
We have guidance around childcare. We don't have specific guidance on childcare on the fly. So I, we, we can ma, we will make that guidance available. That is, you know, CDC has put guidance out as well as the state around childcare. So we will, we will get that guidance out in the next day.
That's great because I just think people are going to be trying to find college students and, or anybody, neighbors. I mean, it's going to be because of our, because our typical childcare networks aren't up really all going. And because we have school age children who are supposed to be in school right now, you know, we're working remotely. I, I think that this is, this is a real challenge for working families. And so I just lay that out there as a real concern that I have. And, and I also have concerns for whatever, whatever piecemeal situations people carve together that, that, that they have the best guidance in terms of should they be wearing masks and what, what should they be doing, you know? So that they have that guidance as well. So right now, that, that concludes my questions. Thank you.
All right, Susan Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first question is for Dina. Dina, on your business leaders roundtable, I was wondering, was the entire meeting, you know, was it, I listened to it on YouTube and I heard you say a couple of times about the audio portion. And I was just wondering if there was another portion besides the audio portion.
Well, it's a WebEx meeting, so the people who are on the WebEx meeting, we can see each other. But the only thing that we're streaming is the, is the audio portion.
So, so does that mean there was a WebEx portion that was simultaneous with the audio portion or was there like a separate?
No, it was streamed, it was streamed live. The audio was streamed live.
Okay, okay, gotcha. I did have some folks ask me that. So that means that they got to hear the entirety. They just didn't see the WebEx part.
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. All right, and, okay, so I also wanted to ask you, I just want to make sure I understand about the funding that we're getting. So for our small business loan fund that we have, our five million dollars, that's not going to be reimbursed through the federal funds, right? Or is it?
You know, I'll punt to Sarah on this one. We think it may be, but I, I think we're still waiting for some additional guidance. Sarah, do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yep, that's right. It is something where we think we could use the funds for that. But because we're not certain whether we would have to repay those funds to the extent we got any repayments of the underlying loans, we want to make sure that we've got a full understanding of what we can and can't do before saying we would pay for coronavirus relief or maintain what we're funding right now on the fund balance. But that is something that we are teeing up to Treasury for clarity on.
Okay, perfect. So we will find out an answer to that. All right, I wanted to make sure, you know, if we do end up going back for more, you know, where those funds are coming from. And I also was wondering if, do you have any data or any answers on how many of our people in Mecklenburg County are teleworking versus how many filed for unemployment? Do you just, do you have any, any numbers, any framework for that?
You know, we still don't. I mean, we've talked about this before. Commissioner Harden has asked us about the unemployment numbers. We still don't have that information. And we certainly don't know how many people are teleworking. It's just really hard to tell. I don't think that's any, a da, a data point that anybody's really reporting.
So we're just not going to know basically like how many of our paycheck to paycheck families are without work at this point? We're just, we're probably not going to know that number? Is that right?
Well, I think that the unemployment told us that they would have something for us in mid-May in terms of, they'll be able to put data out in terms of unemployment numbers in mid-May. But at this point, that's, we're just waiting to simply get it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks so much. And then I wanted to ask Gibby, as far as, I'm getting a lot of questions about face masks. Can you please, you know, just state what, i, if we're going to make that a requirement, a recommendation? Or, you know, how, tell us the face mask situation we're in, please.
So we have made a recommendation. It's been in place for a week, week and a half now. That if individuals go out into the community, that they wear a face mask, especially if they have difficulty social distancing. And that's been a recommendation. There are in some of the guidance that, that has come down for businesses that are reopening and those sorts of things, there's been recommendations about employees wearing. And these are actually, we're recommending face coverings, not masks. Masks we are reserving for those folks who need the N ninety fives and the surgical masks. But what we're recommending are facial coverings, which are the cotton masks that are reusable. And, you know, that, we believe in conversations we've had with the state that that's what, and we heard that from the governor this afternoon, is a recommendation that is if you go out into public that you're wearing a mask. I think they talked about the three Ws and the, the first one was wear a mask. So that is, there are recommendations around that. And, you know, the masks are to prevent you from spreading it to other people. So I want to make sure that that works both ways.
All right, thank you.
I know I'm out of time. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Cotham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a few questions. My Wi-Fi went out because of the storm, so I missed the first Dina's presentation. I'll catch up on it later. I, I just, Gibby, if I could ask you and apologize if someone asked this question. Again, I was off the meeting for a little bit. Can you tell me more about the testing plan for phase one? What would that testing plan involve and what types of individuals or businesses would be served with, by that?
Well, at this point, it is a draft. We do, we don't have a finalized plan yet. And, but hope to have that in the next day or two. And what we're looking at are tiers of, of groups to be tested. We still are receiving a good bit of guidance from the state and the CDC about testing those who are most at risk and who are, who are symptomatic. And we recognize that those need to be the priorities and will continue to be the priorities regardless of what phase we're in. What we're doing right now is looking at other priority groupings that can be opened up if they're asymptomatic or have minor symptoms, those sorts of things. So we'll, we'll have that in place and get that testing plan to y'all as soon as it's finalized in the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make one comment about the mask. I, I hope that we don't make, make it a requirement. I, I have heard from so many people who have anxiety or depression, have been victims of domestic violence, that just cannot wear a mask. Sometimes it takes them back to a bad experience when someone might have been smothering them or they just can't handle it. I've heard, I've also talked to mental health professionals. And I just ask you to think about that. And, you know, I, I have seen some unfortunately shaming about people not wearing masks on social media. So I hope people will not shame someone or someone who has, you know, someone, a family member who has a cognitive problem and cannot wear a mask. So I just, you know, we should take care of ourselves and do what's best. But I do worry about that and I've, I've heard from a lot of people. So thank you for at least keeping that on your radar. Thank you. That ends my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner. Commissioner Fuller.
That would be me. All right, so a couple of questions I have. I, I have a feeling, it feels like we're still being reactionary, which I kind of understand in an emergency situation where at some point we are going to have to come out of it and, and following the idea that Commissioner Harden broached, which is what, what are we, what's our plan for coming out, for getting back to whatever the new normal is? I, I don't have a sense that we have a plan. I feel like we're reacting to things. So what, what's happening with forming a plan? Do we have a plan? What's, what kind of work is being done on a plan?
Well, at this point in time, we are following the governor's plan and trying to make sure that we are prepared to go into the various phases that the governor has outlined. So we're not doing an individual plan, but we are trying to make sure that we can respond appropriately based on the governor's phases.
Right, and I, I get the phase part of it, but, but this phasing really is just coming out of his stay at home order. It, it doesn't really speak to moving forward. And so that's, that's why I'm asking the question. I think we should have some thinking about how we, how we do that. And anyway, that's, let me just suggest that to you, that we need to think about how we get beyond his, his phase, his phase out of his stay at home order. The, the second question I have has to do with this thirty nine point two million dollars. If I understand what we've spent so far related to COVID nineteen, it's been eleven, eleven point one million. Is that accurate?
Our expenses to date have been eleven point eight million.
Eleven point eight, okay. And so if we have thirty nine point two, what are these expenses going to be between the eleven point eight million and the thirty nine point two?
So that's one of the things that we're looking at. The expenses we've incurred to date, not all of them would be eligible for the use of the CARES Act, that they may be better candidates, for example, for FEMA disaster reimbursement, which we're also seeking. So what we're doing is we're looking at all of our COVID expenses. We're comparing them against what the requirements are for the CARES Act. Those three conditions, are they necessary? Were they not accounted for in our budget? And were they incurred between March first and March tw, uh, March first and December thirtieth? And then looking to what best fits those categories so we can maximize the CARES Act funds. Because if there's anything we don't use from that, we would have to return it to Treasury.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm kind of get, that's what I'm trying to get at. How did we get to thirty nine point two million?
It would include not just the expenses to date, but any future expenses that we're incurring as we continue the COVID nineteen response, including potential economic support.
So I think Commissioner Fuller's point, it was a formula that was developed at the federal level. And that's how much we got. So it wasn't as if we submitted a request for thirty nine point two. There was a bunch of money. There was a formula and that's what we got.
Okay, all right. So then in terms of how we spend that money, you would agree with me that those are policy decisions, right?
Yeah, I think, I think they are. And I think, you know, we are trying to think creatively about how we can use those funds based on the experience that we've had here in Mecklenburg County. So for example, we know that homeless is a vulnerable population and they've been dis, you know, impacted disproportionately by COVID. Is there a way to use that to help our homeless residents? We're also looking at the disparities in the African American community. And we know that health disparities are created because of lack of healthy foods. So is there a way for us to do something around food deserts and use some of these funds? So we've been starting to have these conversations about ways that we can use these dollars differently than reacting to what's happening today and potentially use. than reacting to what's happening today and potentially use those to explore other ways that we can use those dollars to help those communities that were disproportionately impacted by COVID.
Okay, and that's kind of what I thought too. And, but I think we need to get going with the planning because the time is probably going to run out on that. So, and the board needs to be able to act on it. So, thank you.
Correct. Yep, you're right.
Okay, Commissioner Scarborough. Okay, I have a couple of questions. All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions and a couple of you have already alluded to it. And I have the same concern. And it's relative to the 39.2 million. Because I want to know what kind of budgetary impact that's going to have. If we have spent 11 million out of our reserve funds, then it appears to me that that money can be replaced, which would have an impact ultimately on our budget. And, and the other thing is, as soon as we get clarity about what we can spend those funds on, for example, the money that has been requested and the money that we're giving to businesses, if we can use those funds, then we need to be able to fund all of the other people who have requested funds that haven't received them. Those are the kinds of things that I'm looking at. And have we talked about being able to do that? The same thing with the hotel, the monies for the, for the homeless, for the hotels. Are those the kind of things we're looking at, even though we haven't spent it yet? We could spend additional monies to give more time for those people.
Yes, that's exactly right. We, we believe that the money that we've expended so far on the hotels for the homeless are absolutely eligible to be used for this $39.2 million. And there's opportunities for us to extend that if we think that's the right thing we need to do. And yes, if we can make some, get some clarity around the business relief programs that we've done, if those are eligible, that gives us an opportunity to expand those programs. The other thing that is being pushed at the federal level right now as well, excuse me, is whether or not we can use, we know we can't do it today, but we're pushing for this, is to use some of those CARE dollars for revenue replacement, reductions in sales tax and the other things that we know we're going to experience. We don't have authority to do that today, but that is being pushed at the federal level to be able to, for us to use that for that purpose as well. So there's a lot of conversations happening about how we might be able to use those funds.
Okay, now, are the hospitals going to receive a separate set of funds? Or do we have to make reimbursements or expenditures for the hospital?
They will be getting their own funds from the federal government. It may have already, actually.
Oh, that's, that's great. Okay, and so then the last question is, if in fact we determine that we'll be able to use most of that 39.2 million, I hope we don't have to send any back, then that will also impact our budget and allow for us to have additional funds or maybe not go into our reserve funds as deeply as we had anticipated. You mentioned being able to use some of those funds to deal with the disparities in African-American community and maybe deal with food deserts, which I think you can make a claim for, given that there might be a shortage of meat and some of these other issues. Are we looking at that as well?
We are. That's one of the things we started to talk about in the last couple of days, is how we can use those funds to be able to bridge those gaps and to make a difference in those communities from a food desert perspective.
All right, thank you. All right, second round, two-minute follow-up question, starting with Commissioner Powell.
I just had one question for Sarah. Sarah, you mentioned something about having to pay the government back and it kind of threw me off. What, what did you mean?
Yep, I apologize for lack of clarity. We, that's going to Dina's previous point. We want to make sure that we are spending all the funds and that we use them so that we wouldn't have to return any. We've already received the money from the federal government, 39.2 million. So we want to make sure that it's something that we can get up, get running, it's eligible and have spent the money by December 30th.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And that concludes my follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question deals with who's on the planning committee to come up with our, our plans. Dina.
It's just, we're just doing it internally with staff, trying to figure out what we can do that might, that might be eligible and find ways to do it. There's no planning committee. It's just staff talking about what we might be able to do.
Are we looking at the motion that was made about the food desert that was brought up at one of our meetings?
Yes, and I have completed my, I have completed my task associated with having conversations with those retailers, those food retailers. And I'm in the process of writing up all of my notes and I'll be prepared to talk about that as we move through the budget process.
So you, are you saying you won't be able to bring them before us?
Yes, I will. I'll be able to do that when we have our meeting on Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, Commissioner Darrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things as it relates to the federal funds that we've received, I, I hope that with our discussions, we'll be creative around. I'm, I'm really grateful for, for the focus right now, particularly as it relates to food deserts and as it relates to the impact on the African-American community. One other group that I want to put on the radar and raise up will be our, our working families and those families that have been impacted throughout the community. Particularly with unemployment benefits not really being extended and they're going to be cut off. And I think that people are going to experience severe economic hardship going a few months from now that particularly as it relates to businesses that won't be coming back, won't be standing up. And so we don't know what the employment situation will look like. So I hope we put some thought around additional support for those working families that have been severely impacted. That concludes my comment, Mr. Chairman. And Dina, I don't know if you have a response to that, but that concludes my comment.
We'll certainly look at that. We can certainly look and see what opportunities we have to respond to that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Harden.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I think I want to, I want to, I want to double down on Commissioner Darrell's remarks. I, I think it's critical that for the 39.2 million, that commissioners are allowed to provide strategic input on how those funds should be spent. And so I guess I want to know the process that you're going to undergo. I, I hear that it's, you're going to, the staff are going to get together. But I think that it's really critical that the community voice be, be, be put into those recommendations and to provide input on those recommendations. So, Dina, what could be a process where you engage commissioners on what those priority spending items could be?
We would formulate some recommendations and bring them to the board for consideration. But I think too, I think it was Commissioner Dunlap, you know, timing is of the essence here. And so, you know, we will work quickly to try to come up with, with recommendations. But if we need to put a plan in motion and we only have until December 31st to spend the money, we don't have a lot of time for a long protracted process. So we will work quickly and bring some recommendations to the board for consideration.
Well, I, and I just want to follow back up. I, I don't, I, I think, I think no one here is saying that asking commissioners about what they think or their communities or their districts would like to see in that spending is something that needs to be protracted. But I think, I think, I think it'll actually save you time to collect commissioners' feedback on the front end than to go through a process where that's not what the community wants us to do with those COVID funds. And so my suggestion is, is that in fact, it might be expedient to go through a process where you collect information from the community and from the commissioners about what.
Yeah, so I totally agree with you, but when you said about community voice, I didn't know whether or not you anticipate.
Okay, did we lose everybody?
I'm here.
I'm here. Dina might have had a storm at her house.
All right. So we'll, we'll allow her, when she gets back on to, to finish her comments. But I think that was the end of Commissioner Harden's time anyway. Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to triple down on Commissioner Darrell's comments about our working families and support what he was talking about, which is exactly what I was trying to get at with, you know, the numbers of folks that we have, you know, applying for unemployment versus.
I'm sorry, Dina, you were cut off. Can you start, can you go ahead and finish your comment? And then we'll ask Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, ask her question over, because you were cut out.
I don't know, something froze up and I lost connectivity, so I apologize for that. So what I was just saying to Commissioner Harden is when you said community voice, I didn't know if that meant town hall meetings or other things that would indeed extend the process. But if that's not what you're anticipating, then yes, getting input on the front end would be helpful.
All right, thank you. Now, Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell, if you'll please start her time again, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as I was saying, I want to triple down on Commissioner Darrell's comments about our working families and finding funds, you know, making sure that they're included in a large way in, in what we do going forward. And I wanted to double down on Commissioner Harden's comments about commissioner involvement. And, and I think that these are obviously two things that are related. And so I wanted to give my support to those ideas. I also wanted to give my support to Commissioner Powell's ideas about the mental health funding that we're going to need going forward and, and asking for more data on that so that we can anticipate some of those funds being used in that way. I also just wanted to check with Gibby, going back to our reopening that, that may be, you know, starting on the 9th. Is there a temperature check thing, you know, going to be happening? Is that, is that something that's being talked about that, you know, public places will be doing any temperature checks?
There really is not any conversation about temperature checks in public settings. It's challenging at best for a number of different reasons, not the least of which is thermometers are in short supply right now. So I think what is going to be happening as we move forward, and I think the governor spoke to this a little bit, is we're going to depend on people taking their own temperature, whether that's just checking in with themselves to see if they have symptoms. And if they do, they need to stay home. If they're ill, they need to stay home. And, and not put others in a position where they could be exposed to them. And that's, that's, we're going to depend on the public to do the right thing.
Thank you very much. That concludes my question.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Cockham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions. Do we have anything exact on the surge capacity at the hospitals? And then secondly, is there, is there any discussion still about a field hospital possibly being needed? Those are my only questions.
We do have, the hospitals have provided us with the number of beds that they've been able to identify that they could surge into. That number is pretty significant for both hospital systems. And because of the numbers that they were able to identify within their walls with the different hospitals within our system, within our county, the discussion of a field hospital has sort of been put on a back burner right now. The belief is that based on what we've been able to do with the curve and short and decreasing the number of cases at any given time, that the hospitals are going to be able to manage those, those cases.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So I too want to affirm this notion that we need to take advantage, if I can say it that way, of this opportunity to help our working families in the many ways that we've talked about, whether it's through healthcare, whether it's homelessness, whether it's employment support. I think we ought to take this opportunity to, to use this 39.2 million and our budget to address these issues. My, my question is, we talked about the CARES Act money. The State General Assembly just passed a relief bill. Do we know what we're getting from that and what, what we can use those funds for?
Sarah, do you have any information on that?
It was just passed yesterday. We're still looking. Some of the pieces are going to require, as they go through the state departments, to find out the final dollar amounts. But we can come back once we've been able to digest and get a little more analysis.
And do we have like a general sense, I know I won't tie you down to a specific, but was there a, is there a general sense of what we're expecting?
Well, let me just say that because we were one of three counties that got federal money, state from the federal government, we should not expect much of anything from the state.
Very well said. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay, Commissioner Scarborough.
I pass. I have no more questions.
All right, thank you. Just a few, Dina, first of all, tell us how you want commissioners to communicate to you their concerns as it really relates to how these funds should be spent.
Well, we're happy to, you know, get email recommendations from the board about what, you know, what they'd like to see us take a look at. And then we'll have to go back and look at the guidance from Treasury to see whether or not it would be eligible. And we can take those recommendations from the board and incorporate with our recommendations or things that we think might work. And then we can bring that back to the board for consideration. I understand the working families thing is really important. I've heard mental health. So we've heard a couple of ideas here that we can go back and look at. But if there's other things that, that the board wants us to consider, if they can just send some emails to me and I'll make sure that we, we take a look at all that.
Okay, and then the other thing that I heard, even though it wasn't necessarily said like this, is that we, we, we expect staff to take a look at all available funds, to do everything that we would like to see happen, even if it means things that we're planning or would like to do that we haven't done yet. If we need to move them up, if it's possible, so that they could be spent under the, the deadline, it might allow us to do some things that we're planning to do later on under those funds. So if we can look at that as well.
Absolutely.
All right. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to recognize, receive and appropriate up to 39.1943, whatever that number is, 39 million from the COVID Relief Fund to the COVID-19 Special Reserve Fund for the duration of the program. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Fuller. I make that motion.
All right, is there a second?
Second, this is Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
All right, it was moved by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell. We established a special reserve fund. I'll now conduct the roll call vote. Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Darrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cockham.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
Commissioner, oh, that's me. The chair votes aye. Madam clerk.
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right, thank you. I now recognize the manager for the budget public engagement update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to call on Michael Bryant. On his last day as our management and budget director, because tomorrow he assumes his responsibilities as assistant county manager, to give you an update on our budget public engagement initiative. I do want to say that he and his team did an amazing job of making sure the public had input into this budget process. Every year we do this, it gets, it gets better and better. And I want to congratulate Macon, Adrian and Lyne on some great work. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Good evening. Thank you, County Manager Diorio, Chairman Delap, and members of the board. The purpose of this presentation is to brief you on the results from our Budget Public Engagement Initiative. I'll kick off the presentation. Then there will be a brief video which highlights the results from our community budget workshops. Then you'll hear from Megan Palmer, who facilitated the community budget workshops. You should be familiar with Megan. She facilitated the prioritization exercise back at your 2019 board retreat that resulted in your five budget priorities that was factored in both fiscal year 2020 adopted budget and the fiscal year 2021 recommended budget. I'm pleased to inform you that our Budget Public Engagement Initiative has been awarded a Government Finance Officers Association Award of Excellence. This award is given to only a few organizations annually that have achieved remarkable success in implementing innovative programs that exemplified outstanding financial management for the communities they serve. So I'd like to commend our Acting Budget Director, Adrian Cox, and our Acting Budget Manager, Lyden Williams, and Christine Edwards, a PI, for a job well done. And of course, our County Manager for setting the vision for this very important public engagement initiative. Next slide, please. As noted on this slide, for the second consecutive year, the manager solicited input from the advisory board. This was done in part in response to the board's interest to increase the involvement of advisory boards in the annual budget process. The manager sent a letter to the Chair of 14 Advisory Boards back on December the 2nd, and they were given until January the 8th to provide their budget priorities. Initially, we only had five boards to respond by the original January the 8th deadline. Staff sent a follow-up on January the 14th, and we received one more response, bringing the total to six responses out of the 14 memos that were sent. For that in context, last year for the fiscal year 2020 budget cycle, we received responses from all 14 advisory. Also, each advisory board chair was given the option to present their budget priorities to the board during a regular meeting, and none of them tick us up on that offer. Copies of the six responses was provided to the board at your annual retreat back in January. The manager did factor the responses during the development of her recommended fiscal year 2021 budget. At this time, I'll ask for the production team to now play the video.
This is your FY21 Mecklenburg County Budget Update. I'm Lawrence Corley from Public Information. The pace is picking up to develop the county manager's recommended FY21 budget. County departments and partners are preparing their request, which will be followed in May by County Manager Dina Diorio presenting her plan to the Board of County Commissioners. This year's process already includes an unprecedented amount of public input, with thousands already weighing in on their budget priorities for Mecklenburg County. In February, four facilitated public meetings provided yet another chance for the manager and budget staff to hear from the public.
As a community member, I am interested in how we prioritize the budget, where the budget goes, what it funds within the community.
Wanted to get some more information and be more in tune about how the county funding budget actually works.
Education is always going to be my top priority personally, because we can't move forward as a community without having people understand, you know, about the world around them.
And this is just an opportunity to get folks around the table and to really understand what their priorities are. People have really incredibly strong ideas, that they're passionate, they care about their local government, and they want to participate. And I think that's great.
Earlier this year, more than 3,000 residents filled out the budget priority survey and dozens spoke at the pre-budget public hearing, while others have created their own county budget using the online MECC Budget Simulator. All 14 county advisory boards were also invited to provide their budget input in advance of the recommended budget. You can see the survey results online when you click my little Lawrence picture on the homepage of mechnc.gov. Still to come for FY21, the county manager's recommended budget is set for release May 1st. There's another budget public hearing on May 13th. Deliberations and straw votes by county commissioners will be held on May 26 and 27. And adoption of the FY21 Mecklenburg County budget is scheduled for June 2nd. Watch live regular board meetings and replays at mechnc.gov, and I'll keep you informed every step of the way. With your FY21 Budget Update, I'm Lawrence Corley.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Megan Palmer, and I'm going to give you an update on the community budget workshops. In the interest of time, I'm just going to get to it. The purpose of the workshops was to provide the community with information on the budget process and allow them the opportunity to give input on the county's top priorities for fiscal year 2021 through these face-to-face engagement opportunities. The sessions began with a welcome from County Manager, followed by Budget Director Michael Bryant giving an overview of the county's budget process. We then conducted two prioritization exercises, followed by the MECC Budget Simulator demonstration. We ended with Dina and Michael answering questions and providing clarification of the priorities and budget process. Next slide, please. Instead of holding the workshops in districts, it was decided to hold them in five regions across the county to promote more participation. The Central Region event was canceled due to inclement weather, but invitations were extended to those registered for the two remaining sessions. Two sessions were held in the evenings and two on Saturday mornings to provide more opportunities for busy schedules. Also, the event at the Albemarle Road Rec Center had a Spanish interpreter available to assist as needed. Next slide. As you can see, the results were overwhelmingly positive. Note that overall, half the participants had never attended a Mecklenburg County event. This is great news because of their positive experience. And just speaking of participation, it was a great experience for both participants and county staff because of the interest and passion of people wanting to be part of such an opportunity. Next slide. We had adequate numbers of participants attend the four sessions to ensure the prioritization exercises were engaging. While there were more women than men attending, there was not a significant difference. Next slide. Regarding race and ethnicity differentiation, these workshops had better representation from the African-American, Black, and Hispanic-Latino communities as compared to the online survey completion. Overall, engagement opportunities indicate that these workshops allowed us to reach more people that we were not able to reach with just the online survey. Next slide. Regarding age, the highest representation was with the 55 and older group. Also note that the 55 and over group had better representation at the face-to-face workshops than they had completing the online survey. Next slide. Moving on to the prioritization exercises, I instructed each table that they were now their own Board of County Commissioners and had some tough decisions to make. Each table completed two activities and were tasked to collaborate and report out on their table's priorities. In both exercises, we asked them to include other priorities that were not identified that they believed should be considered. Each table selected a captain or a board chair to report out on one of the activities as time did not allow each table to report on both. In fact, their discussion was so involved and valuable, we lengthened the time of the activities to encourage even more discussion. We took the averages of each table in each workshop, and this is the ranking of priorities. Consistently, education and affordable housing came up in the top four, with recognition that funding these priorities would be the greatest return on investment on the other priorities. There was only a fraction separating education from affordable housing and criminal justice from recreation. In each session, questions about what economic development encompasses came up, and I will cover that topic in subsequent slides. Next slide. The second activity involved participants to respond to the Board of County Commissioners' identified priorities during the fiscal year 2020 budget process. We asked if they thought these priorities reflect the areas of greatest need in the community. While everyone agreed with the identified priorities, there were questions about reduced racial disparities in each session, and I will elaborate on in just a minute. Next slide. Other identified priorities suggested include these areas. In all four sessions, arts and culture is where well as senior services were recommended. Interestingly, park and rec did come up in one session, who had advocates for those services. But as a result of the activity and discussion, this group reported that although park and rec is important, they chose not to identify it as an other priority. Next slide. Next, Enterprise Budget Analyst Lyden Williams conducted a quick overview of the MECC Budget Simulator. He demonstrated the different components of this online tool, highlighting how to access additional information via the links. He showed the groups how to manage and balance the budget, as well as how funding decision impacts taxes, more specifically, their own personal tax situations. They love this tool. We encouraged them to go home and work on balancing a budget and to spread the word to family, friends, and neighbors. Next slide. We compiled discussion themes arising out of the sessions, and the groups all recognized that priorities are interconnected, and the top priorities tend to positively impact the other priorities. As I referenced earlier, there were questions about economic development. As some commented that at face value, it appeared the county was giving away money. Once Dina and Mike explained more about the implications of economic development and how it impacted other priorities, they understood. Similarly, reducing racial disparities raised questions as participants were unclear on what this term means. Again, once Dina and Mike explained what was going on, both internal to the county and with how services are being delivered, they understood. A suggestion came up to reframe reducing racial disparities to increasing equitable practices, and overall, the participants loved that rewarding, a more positive twist. In every workshop, there was certainly a new appreciation of not only the complex process of creating a budget, but also for the difficult decisions county commissioners must make every year. Next slide. The interaction was impressive. As we walked around answering questions and clarifying, it was very clear that everyone was not only engaged, but excited about their participation and the opportunity these types of events offer. We also discovered that we could accommodate 25 to 30 people in future engagement opportunities such as this. With a million or so people living in Mecklenburg County, we certainly have the capacity to reach even more residents. The Budget Office will continue to work with public information to increase the participation rate moving forward. Next slide. Again, these workshops certainly had more involvement with the African-American, Black, and Latino-Hispanic, and those over 55 age group than the online survey representation of these groups. There was greater understanding of how funding one priority impacts other priorities. At the end of each session, we told participants we would be sending the MECC Budget Simulator link to access this tool again, as well as the budget overview PowerPoint and the overall results of the four workshop sessions. Overall, these community public budget workshops were very successful, and they indicate promise of future engagement opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Dina?
We're available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, Madam Clerk, let's set the timer at five minutes. Now, this is in total, no follow-up, because you're going to have more time to ask questions about the budget as we move forward with the budget process. So let's start with Commissioner Powell.
This is Commissioner Powell. I have a question, since we only received information from six advisory boards. And at the time, our Chair, our different advisory boards did not know about a global pandemic coming. I'd like to know what we have to do to request that information from our advisory boards now that we're in the global pandemic? Like, can we request information from all of them to see if they've modified any of their ideas? Or can we do that, Michael?
I'll yield to the preference of the manager. As you know, she's already released her budget. If she decides to move forward in soliciting that information, that's something that we would present to you at one of your future workshops, as information relative to how they modified and responded to the pandemic.
Yeah, I'm fine with another request to see if we get additional information.
Thank you, because I think it would be helpful, because it's a whole, it's a whole new set of circumstances that we're dealing with, so I'd like to hear what they have to say. And I want to thank everyone for embracing community engagement, because I think I've been sworn in. I've seen so much progress made in different, unique ideas about how to engage the citizenry, which I think is so important when we're spending, deciding how to spend tax dollars. So thank you for that. And, you know, just personally, sometimes, sometimes I'm surprised to read some of the survey results. And when we're in this global pandemic and people think that this is the absolute worst thing that could happen, I wonder to myself, what will happen if we ever, if we can't go outside because the air isn't clean enough? Or if we don't have water, because the water isn't safe to drink? So I'm always surprised where the environment lands. To me, it's number one. And I think if people were really thinking through it, the interconnectedness of everything, that environment would be a higher priority. So it's just surprising to me that it's not number one. But I will continue to be a champion for environmental stewardship and for citizen engagement. So thank you for all that you've done, and that concludes my questions for now. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Lee.
Let me say thank you for the presentation, part of it I did not get to see. So I'm wondering about some of the questions that the people had as related to racial disparities and wanting to know more about what it was and how we intend to embrace that process and changing it.
Well, thank you for your question, Commissioner Lee. I'll tell you that during those community budget workshops, it was very informative that at a few of those meetings, there was an emerging theme that the participants were seeking clarity on exactly what does reduce racial disparities mean? Because just as a standalone, it wasn't clear to them. So as Megan alluded to in her presentation, once we provided that clarity, such as what are we doing internally as an organization, looking at our policies and procedures? And now, as you know, as the manager has released her budget, she's investing in areas such as food deserts, also the grassroots organizations. Those were some of the things that we were bringing to their attention as relates to exactly what efforts are we taking relative to eliminating some of these disparities.
So you made it clear to the body what racial disparities were. Did you lift them besides what they said?
Absolutely. We clarified exactly from the board's priorities what the intention behind that is and gave them real examples back then what we were doing relative to looking at our internal policies and procedures. And we did raise their awareness that from your board retreat, you discussed food deserts as well as funding grassroots organization. Now, of course, at that time, the manager hadn't finalized all of her decisions, but those were things that we utilized to help clarify.
Can I stop you a minute? And thank you so much, and I appreciate it. But my concern is, looking at the budget, as to who's going to do what as relates to with that process? Who's going to help change, what are our plans to change it? Because for... Because for three years or four years, we've talked about food deserts forever. So, I'm wondering what's in place to change the process.
Mr. Leake, we can talk more about that when we get to the budget conversations.
I'm sorry, didn't hear, I did.
I said when we get into the budget deliberations, we can talk more about our strategies for food deserts.
And others, all of it. How it's going to take place and who will be delivering the services to make it better than what it's been?
We can talk more about that when we get to the budget process.
Okay, I'm saying the county commissioners will make their recommendations?
We'll present what's in the budget, and we'll take feedback from the board on how they'd like us to proceed.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
All right, um, Commissioner, lost my list. All right, Commissioner Jarrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Community engagement is, is so important, and I appreciate the, the level of engagement that was displayed. Uh, I have a question. I want to drill down more on the representation. And I want to understand if, did we get any sense of why the engagement in the African-American community was so different than on the online portion? And then part two to that question would be, do we know if the participants that actually showed up to the, to the live event, did they also do the, or do we have a percentage of the ones that actually did the online engagement? Or was it just a, a clear separation?
Well, to respond to your initial question, and I commend our Public Information Department for their marketing strategy. Once we saw that the representation regarding minorities was trending low, our PI put together a strategy where we had targeted certain area codes with, um, what I would say, radio advertising. And that proven to be very effective in getting the word out in those particular communities, um, in addition to some of the social media, as well as the, um, the interviews that the manager and I completed with the local news stations, as well as radio also. So, we think that contributed to some of the turnout based on the responses at the end of the workshops when we inquired about how they learned about those, those meetings. We thought that was very effective.
So, uh, so I would assume moving forward as we, as we continue this process, we've, we have some best practices that we can use to even ramp up participation in our online survey. Would that be fair?
I concur. We, we agree when we debriefed as a team to build on our successes, as well as search for other opportunities to enhance the involvement from all races, particularly those that are underrepresented.
Sure, because we've seen historically that, you know, when we do these surveys, particularly online surveys, you have groups that are overrepresented and others that are underrepresented. So, I'm just trying to see if we're gonna really implement those best practices to, to try our best to balance that. And so, I applaud the team in, in taking those approaches. So, I, I do want to say thank you, Michael, and, and the team for initiating those response to ensure that there is equity when we get this feedback so that we can make decisions for the entire community and not just those that maybe have time, access, um, or any other means. So, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Harden.
Thank you. Uh, so, um, Budget Director Bryant, can you tell me, you said that the, the results show that there, there was very close between education and affordable housing being the first, you know, being the one and two priority. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell me how much we allocated in our 1920 budget for affordable housing?
For the 1920 budget, which is the current fiscal year, the manager recommended a total of 11 million in new investments, which primarily supported rental subsidies.
And tell me what the recommendation is this year for affordable housing?
And then for fiscal year '21, she's recommending an additional $4 million, of which $3 million is to go towards rental subsidies, and the $1 million will support critical home repair.
So, that's actually, it's a, it's a, it's a drop in the funding level for affordable housing. Is that correct?
Well, if you're looking at the, the amount that was set aside in '20 in comparison to '21, yes. You also recall that part of that decision is preserve some of our fund balance as well.
Right. So, I mean, but, but you would, you would agree that, that if it wasn't the first priority was the second priority that the community drew focus on?
Based off what we heard from those workshops, correct?
Thank you. That, that concludes my questions.
All right, Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say how proud I am of our staff. I am so proud of the commissioners also who pushed for more public engagement, because I think, um, these meetings, um, were extremely successful, and I think they were extremely important. And I just want to say, it's, uh, when we look at people not quite understanding, what did we mean by racial disparities? I think that conversation is such an important conversation. When you look at slide number eight and you see the, the graph of who is attending the meetings, you could, you might understand why some folks didn't understand the language. And I think the setting that was created by the staff for these meetings was just a, a great, um, example of a small conversation to have these kind of discussions. I think it was, uh, very, um, important that these things are explained in a way that people can understand. And, um, and I think that access to that kind of information presented on this small scale is really effective for people to really get it. So, I really, I want to commend, um, the, the whole process of putting those on. Having said that, I, I think, um, you know, if we can do that again in the coming year, but have more, uh, more of these meetings, I think it would be good. And I think if you looked at the map as to where those meetings occurred, you would see some holes, uh, in the county to, to where those meetings occurred. And so, I think it would be, uh, really great if we could add a few more in those, in those areas that weren't reached. So, and then having also the, the idea about the advisory boards that weren't responsive to the letter asking for their input for the budget. I just want to say, you know, I really want to try to study why that has occurred. Why has only six out of 14 responded? And, you know, one of my presumptions is that maybe, um, they did not feel that it was a worthwhile effort, perhaps maybe in the past. I don't know. I'm just guessing. Um, and, and so I think it would be really important for us to engage with our advisory boards and really question them as to what's not working for, from their perspective with our procedure on getting their input, because we really, uh, we really want their input. And so, I think, I think maybe there's, uh, there's a disconnect that we really need to study a little bit. I'm grieved when I think about this, because I think of Sharika and the work that she was beginning to engage, uh, in this area for us. And I was looking forward to working with her on that. But as we move forward, um, it's really important that we get those voices to the table. And so, I just want to say, I hope that we'll put some time into, um, sort of researching what's going on with our advisory boards that they're not being responsive with those budgets. So, I didn't really have a question. Those were my comments. That concludes, uh, my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Copham.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation. I, I wanted to ask a, a question about the participants at the community meeting. And I appreciate you, uh, giving us the attendees. It looked like there were a total of 79. And I wanted to know, what was your expectation, um, for that, for those meetings? And, um, do you think that going forward with additional meetings or different times? Because it seemed like it, it proved to be valuable that we could grow on these numbers?
Yes. Thank you for your question, Mr. Copham. We were prepared for 25 to 30 participants for each workshop. The actual numbers range from, I would say, and I know it's an odd number, but like from 11 to 22, depending on the workshop, which resulted in 79 to 82 participants. So, um, we do, and, and Communications, Rita, this, we're gonna partner and continue to find ways to promote more participation. Getting on, you know, we call boots on the ground and going to different places, whether it's churches, restaurants, wherever people frequent to, to get the word out, build on the radio advertising as well, those targeted groups that we tried to bring in. So, we're just gonna capitalize on some of the lessons learned. It may very well be that we add additional workshops. We don't know if that's the silver bullet or not, but those are some things that will be taken into consideration as we plan for the upcoming process next year.
Well, that's, that sounds great. And, uh, you know, I think the commissioners can also be helpful to you in, uh, driving attendance. So, I just ask you to keep that in mind, um, also. But thank you very much, and, and thank you for your services, Budget Director, and good luck tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner Copham.
That concludes my, um, questions.
All right, Commissioner Fuller.
All right, thank you. I was glad to hear that people were asking the question of what we meant by reducing racial disparities. And, um, and so that was a, a learning moment for our community to know what, what it is we're after. It's also a learning moment for us that we need to be more clear about what we mean by reducing racial disparities and what specifically, uh, will change as a result of this being our stated goal. I would say that we should not, uh, sugarcoat the issue. And when you change the name of something, uh, while it's well-meaning, it does tend to sugarcoat the issue by calling it reducing inequities. That's a very benign and antiseptic way to describe what is actually going on and the meaning in people's lives. But my main point about even making that comment is that it means that we need to engage much more on this issue with the community. And so, to the extent that we can put together some structures to, to increase this kind of engagement, I think this is a great start. And what this means to me is that we've got an appetite, uh, for much more. And I hope that we will do that and that we will engage on those tough questions without sugarcoating and getting to the meat of solving these problems that have bedeviled our community. So, I have no questions. Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioners Scarborough.
Comment.
All right. Okay, uh, I want a few questions, follow-up. I want to echo Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell's comments about the advisory. My personal experience was that they didn't feel that they were being listened to. Some of them had requests that were never really addressed. And so, um, I, I do want us to at least make a second attempt, letting them know that, that we do really want to hear what they have to say. But the other thing I have to remind us is that everything they're concerned about is not necessarily budgetary. It doesn't have a budget impact. And so, um, I think, um, engaging them a second time will give us the opportunity to learn whether or not they really have some budgetary concerns or if those concerns are somewhat different. I, I, I also have to remind us that, uh, by the next time there is a budget, there will be a new composition of Board of County Commissioners, which suggests that that new board might have a different set of priorities. So, while it might matter through, um, December, what something may or may not be called, just know that those priorities might change, um, next year. And then finally, a budgetary question that came via text message while we were online. And it's a follow-up to something that Commissioner Fuller, um, said. And it, the question is, find it again. And it's something that we haven't talked about. And it's given the potential of a second wave of COVID in the fall. Would we be, or should we be safeguarding, uh, some of those funds that we're receiving? The difference between the 39 million and the 11 million? Because if we do go and spend it all now, and something happens in the fall before December, where are we budgetarily? That was a question that would, that came to me. So, if there's a response to that, we'll accept it now, but if you need to follow up with me, that's fine.
We will follow up if the chairman done that.
Okay. Thank you. So, at this time, make sure I'm right. All right. We will move to our consent agenda. So, is there a motion to approve all the remaining items on the consent agenda?
So, move, Chairman. This is Commissioner Susan Harden.
All right. Is there a second?
Second from Commissioner Powell.
All right. It was moved by Commissioner Harden, seconded by Commissioner Powell, that we approve those items, not pull from the consent agenda. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leake.
Yes, I tried to make the motion. I don't think you heard me.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Copham.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous aye vote.
All right. We'll move to the first item that was pulled, item number 6083, grant application, U.S. Department of Justice, pulled by Commissioner Leake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have all of the information that was supposed to come to a fourth consent item, but the information that we do have pertains to, uh, a grant. So, we are looking for the approval of a grant that would be 58,000, am I right, dollars? That will impact, uh, the Sheriff's Department as it relates to the virus and its inflicting, uh, problems for that area. So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, who was that?
Scarborough, second.
Thank you. Commissioner Leake, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. We approve the app, the grant application. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leake.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Copham.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right. Moving to item 6095, grant application, 2020 U.S. Tennis Association, pulled by Commissioner Leake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question about this, is this making reference to 10-year olders and under for equipment? That would be a part of this grant?
Yes.
So, that would afford the young people the opportunity. So, move, Mr. Chairman. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough, that we approve the grant application. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right, moving to item six-zero-nine-six, grant application Medicare Improvement for Patients and Providers Act, pulled by Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This grant deals specifically with Department of Insurance for Medicare Improvement for Patients Act of up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars to expand the Medicare and low-income educational component and counseling and enrollment services to help those who need it the most through parking wrecks. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was unanimous amongst all commissioners voting.
Thank you. Moving to item six-one-zero-three, memorandum of agreement, Antiquity Greenway.
I'd like for the manager to explain that to the public, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. So basically, this is a memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement between the county and the town of Cornelius for the county to operate and maintain a portion of the greenway in Cornelius known as the Antiquity Greenway. This, we've done this before in other parts of the county, and it just makes sure that we have consistent maintenance of our greenway trails.
Will that cost us any money?
It will not.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Scarborough.
Moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Powell, you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous vote for all commissioners voting.
Right, item sixty-one-zero-seven, CDBG Plan Update, pulled by Commissioner Lee and by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Let me say thank you for allowing me to pull this, and this is a large one. This deals specifically with community development block grant programs. The question I have along with this is it's up for five years. And how will we go about implementing this process in the community?
So we have to, yep, we have to do a consolidated plan every five years, and the plan is a community-driven process. We brought the process for developing the consolidated plan to the board some months ago. And basically, what it does, it sets the priorities for the community over the next five years. And the prime, the priorities are, number one is housing, and there's public services, public improvements, economic development. Those are the priorities for the plan over the next five years. And so basically, what we're asking you to do is to approve those priorities as part of the plan going forward. But the amount of money that we generally get is about eight hundred or so thousand dollars per year, and we solicit proposals for how those dollars will be spent.
Thank you. And I noticed there's one at the very bottom that talks about anti-poverty strategies, and all of these need to be implemented throughout our community, community to enhance and create some degree of relief for those who are receiving, feeling that problem of poverty. So I move this, Dr.
Up second, this is Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, y'all were talking over each other. Commissioner, you had questions about this as well?
Oh, no, I was just seconding, that answered my questions, and I thought she made the motion, and I was just seconding it.
Okay, it was moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous vote.
All right, item six-one-one-zero, budget amendment for the volunteer fire department fund balance appropriated, pulled by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell and Commissioner Lee. Commissioner McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to bring awareness for the public on this and also to check and understand the total amount of the repair that had to be done. Like, is this going to totally cover it, or was there more funds that were going to be needed?
So i- in this appropriation, the cost that we would have to pay is seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars. That would be the entire cost. It's a fifty-fifty share.
So who's the other fifty?
Charlotte Water.
Oh, okay, so Charlotte Water pays fifty, we pay fifty, and then that, is that the total? I thought there was more to the project that wasn't included in the Charlotte Water portion.
Well, this is for the, to initiate the sewer extension project.
Uh-huh, okay. And so was there more to it to get this sewer system working than just the Charlotte?
It does not include the connection costs or the capacity fees, which would have to be paid for by the Steel Creek Fire Department.
Okay, and do you have?
I don't know how much that is, I'd have to follow back up with you. I don't have that exact cost.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you. Moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Lee.
Yeah, I have a question to add to that, and I want to say thank you for outpulling this for VFD and the Steel Creek community. And I believe, as you said, it would be fifty-fifty with the water and then with the county.
Correct.
Am I right, Madam Chairman? I mean, I'm sorry. Well, if that's the case, what will be a balance, if there's a balance? If they pay, we pay half and they pay half?
I, I, let me follow up back up with you and get that information. I don't have that exact number with me tonight, but I'll find out and report back.
Well, I pulled this in efforts to support what is needed to continue the work on this end, especially right here in the Steel Creek community. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I think it was already moved by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell, if you want a second?
I will do just that. I second that emotion, okay?
All right, moved by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Lee. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
With great love and respect for our volunteer fire departments, I vote aye.
Commissioner Lee.
I vote exactly to support it, that's why I pulled it.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
A unanimous vote of everyone voting.
All right, thank you. The final agenda item is commissioners' reports. You have up to three minutes to make whatever comments you like to make at this time, and the clerk will keep the timer. It's okay if you don't have any comments, just say no comments. Commissioner Powell.
This is Commissioner Powell. I just want to thank everyone for thinking about food deserts, health disparities, mental health, working families, citizen engagement. I'm glad we're going to get another round of reports from our advisory boards. And I just, and I, I also want to back up what Commissioner Harden said about, you know, running things by the county commission so that you get input from us, so that we represent the citizens well. I think it's a great way to make sure that citizens' voices are heard, and thank you for being so open to that. And those, that concludes my comments. Just thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Want to call to the attention of this community of a school problem, and it's not in my district, but in reading about it, I got eight telephone calls last night about Audrey Kell. So I'm hoping that the superintendent and the staff will address those issues there. The other piece is that the school buses are not delivering food to the communities. There are individuals who's doing that, school buses are not being used for that purpose. And I want to thank several of my churches, many, maybe five of my churches, who's volunteering to take care of our young people and community who does not have Wi-Fi. And the other piece is, I want to say to my senior citizens, keep the faith, all is well, and that you are being remembered, especially by Lee, who is a senior in this trying time that we're living in. So keep the faith, remember to whom we belong, and carry on what we need to do, and respect and love each other. The last thing I want to say, I cannot forget the young lady who worked for us for two years on the eleventh floor. It has not been a day past that I have not communicated with the young lady with whom she lived. So I say to us, let's remember and love each other as we ought to, and do the right thing by and for each other. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, Commissioner Jarrell.
I want to thank my colleagues tonight for your support in us lifting up working families. It's so important for us to keep them on our radar. I think a lot of times they get lost in the shuffle as we go about trying to set priorities and to support people who are definitely deserving in the community. But I think it's always good for us to realize that those working families are the ones that really provide us the economic engine that causes many to thrive and others to survive in this community. So thank you, colleagues, for that. Want to also say congratulations to Adrian and Lyden. It's fantastic that you all are stepping up into these roles. And to Michael Bryan, of course, all of us are extremely proud of you and your trajectory. And thank you for preparing the individuals on your team. That is certainly a mark of an outstanding leader that has people ready to step up as you move on. So you worked your way out of a job, so that's great. So finally, I want to always thank our entire staff for their, their work. I want to remind the community that we have to stay vigilant. Now is not the time, since we're loosening restrictions, now is not the time for us to have a free-for-all, but it's time for us to continue to be smart and go about and move smartly throughout the community to keep not only your immediate family safe, but keep other community members safe. And I think we've done a fantastic job of helping and lifting each other up. So let's keep that on the forefront of our minds as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too want to thank my constituents in District Five for their commitment to the stay-at-home order. I know that, you know, this is really a trying time for all of us, and, and I think that, I just want to, you know, emphasize the comments of my colleagues when I say that we still have to be vigilant and heed the advice of our health director, our public health experts across the state as we, as we move forward to loosen some of the restrictions. I also want to say that, you know, I think that when we get the unemployment numbers later on this month, I think we're going to be literally stunned and sickened by the number of unemployed in our community. I think we could easily have a hundred thousand, you know, unemployed and that, which equates to, as Commissioner Jarrell was saying, it could be twenty-five thousand families. And so as we think about, as we go through this budget time, this can't be business as usual. This can't, I, I think our community expects us to do things differently because we are in a different time. We're in a very different time than we were three months ago when we were talking about going through the budget process, the beginnings of the budget process. We are in a dramatically different time. I see K-12, you know, absolutely rewriting how they do education. I see higher ed rewriting how they're doing education. I think our community expects us to think differently about how we do human services and especially be responsive during this period of time, especially to the suffering of working families and making sure that we're putting the building blocks in place so that people can, you know, grab on to those pieces to get to the other side of this tragedy. And so, you know, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm thinking about over the next month is, how can we, how can we put forward a budget that's not business as usual? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my comments.
All right, Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question for the manager, and I'm just raising it here because, for public awareness. I, I was just a little bit curious about our next Tuesday meeting where it was supposed to be from nine to five for the detailed overview. And, but then I, I see that we're being called into the Government Center at 2:00 P.M. for closed session, so I'm trying to understand how to reconcile that, or can you just explain?
Sure, yeah, I know it's a little confusing. We got another email from another board member. So we, we booked the detailed overview from nine to five. I don't think it will take that long. We, I, I don't believe it'll take that long. But we do have some closed session items that we have to do, and we have nominations and appointments that we have to do in open session. And we need to bring you together in person to be able to do those things. And so what we're asking is that we're going to do the, the budget overview at nine o'clock, and then we will ask you to come to the Government Center to do the closed session and the nominations and appointments. If we're not done with the detailed overview, we can continue on that path, but be done by then. But we do need you to come into the Government Center at two o'clock on Tuesday to be able to do these things. We've got some things that we just have to take care of, and we cannot do closed session and appointments virtually.
Okay, thank you. I understand now. Appreciate it. That's all for my comments.
Sorry if it wasn't clear in my email.
All right, Commissioner Coffin. Commissioner Coffin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry my Wi-Fi went out again. For the record, I would like to say that I vote, voted aye on the consent items, and I thank Commissioner Lee for always bringing them forward. The only thing that I would just like to, and again, I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have said and thank our staff for all the work that they do. And I, I do, certainly we are in an unprecedented time, and not only has our life changed, but we have all changed, and our, all of our residents in our Malcolmburg County have all changed. And we, there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of worry, there's a lot of people who are just terrified, not only for their health, their lives, but their, their economic well-being. So we, we have to be gentle with our people, and we need to listen to them and always keep them in the forefront, and I believe that we're all ready to do that. And I think that will be helpful as we go forward. And I think that will be helpful as we go forward. Um, we, we are definitely going to be serving them and I know our manager and her team will do a great job in, um, with our budget and serving the people in the best way. So, um, I am ready to, to continue to serve our people and, um, but I do realize that we've all changed and I think it's important to recognize that. Um, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fuller.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I learned, um, in my religious tradition that, um, this too shall pass. That the storm comes and it may be strong and devastating, but there will be an end. And so it is with this, uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, it is a storm that we're still in. It seems like while we're in it, it'll never end. But the truth of the matter is it will end at some point. And in its wake is going to be a great deal of carnage. And we've got to acknowledge that. And we also have to rebuild from it. Uh, and I believe the people are looking for us to lead the way to rebuild better even than we had it before. And so what that means is that they're looking for, the people are looking for leadership from their elected leaders. And, uh, that's the role that we have to play. And while, um, we are so grateful for the dedicated and professional staff that we have and all the resources that we have through our county. At the end of the day, the people expect their representatives to provide the leadership. And so I believe that's what we're called upon to do. As we look at our budget recommended by our county manager, I agree with what has been said that we can't just do the same thing we've been doing that it requires something more of us. And so we've got to take this opportunity to, um, to do that rebuilding in a way that improves our community. And the public needs to be heard more. And whereas people, uh, you know, I read things in the paper about things the county is doing. Um, and feel like, uh, in many ways, I'm not part of those conversations. That's, that's gotta change. And so I'm calling for us to, um, continue our response to the COVID situation, but that we, uh, reclaim our role as leaders of the people. And that means that, uh, we are called upon to act and we must do so without fear, without favor, uh, for the betterment of all of our community. And, uh, this shouldn't be about power, who has it, who doesn't. But rather that, um, we continue to be, I believe, that county on that hill, shining on the hill. That's what Mecklenburg is. And, um, we have, in this crisis, an opportunity to make ourselves even better than we were before. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Scarborough.
All that has been said, all I need to say is let's, as the county commissioner board, let's keep doing great for the people. Thank you very much. I think everything is well done.
All right, thank you. Uh, just a few brief comments. First of all, I, I want to thank our essential workers. All those people working in the hospitals, the doctors, the, the medic, um, because these people put themselves on the line even when people act foolishly. Um, because everybody doesn't get it. Um, but still, we have these people who are willing to put their lives on the line for those who act foolishly. So I want to thank our essential workers. I want to thank our staff who continuously, uh, make sure the county government, um, moves forward. Uh, I also want to congratulate Adrian and, and Alidin for, um, their promotions. I agree with, uh, Commissioner, uh, Jarrell. It is something when a leader prepares those behind him to take their place when they move on. So thank you, uh, Michael, for your preparing, uh, the two of those. I also want to thank our community. Um, again, I don't think enough has been said about how well our community is responding to COVID nineteen. When I look at the national news and I see what's going on in Atlanta and I see what's going on in a lot of these other places just that are just totally ignoring what's really happening in our country, it saddens me. Uh, so I want to thank our community for continuing to, to social distance, uh, for, for continuing to wear masks. I'm seeing more and more masks. And while we may not have a policy requiring it, I simply want to say that you're wearing a mask protects you from others. And if you don't want to be protected, so, so be it. But, but I'm gonna protect myself from those who don't want to be protected. And continuously washing your hands, that is so critically important. Um, and I want to thank my colleagues who, every time we have a meeting, demonstrate how they are listening to our community and asserting themselves and taking on the role that they've been elected, um, to, to do. And so I, I thank each and every one of you for giving me this opportunity to serve you as chair. And then lastly, um, the one thing I can say about our county manager and the staff is that years ago, they saw that we would have another situation that would require us to have funding to be able to prop us up. And that's why we have so much available to assist us and to assist this community so that we don't find ourselves in the same situation we were in two thousand and eight when we had to go to various departments and ask for money back. So we're prepared to address it. It takes all of us, all of our collective voices, all of our collective wisdom to make the right decision for this community. And I am certain that we are prepared to do that. So with that being said, Madam, Madam Manager, any final comment?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And I always, uh, appreciate the continued support of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this concludes the item on the agenda. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second. This is Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Full of seconded by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Present.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cockham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The meeting stands adjourned.